Good evening. On behalf of my colleagues and Central Office staff, I'd like to welcome you to the Shrewsbury School Committee meeting of March 27th, 2019. Our meeting tonight is being televised thanks to the work of Mr. John McDonald and the Shrewsbury Media Connection. This meeting will be rebroadcast on Channel 29 until our next regularly scheduled meeting on April 10th. It will also be available for viewing on SMC's website. The first item on our agenda tonight is public participation. Public participation provides an opportunity for members of the community to address the school committee and is at the top of our agenda at each regular meeting. Tonight, no one has expressed interest in addressing the committee. Those wishing to do so in the future should contact the chairperson in advance of the meeting and you will be recognized for up to three minutes. The next item on our agenda is chairperson's and members' reports. Colleagues, anything to report? Seeing none, the next item on our agenda is superintendent's report. Dr. Sawyer.
Thank you, Mr. Palich. A few things I'd like to report on this evening. Some excellent news from various student achievements, both at the high school and Oak Middle School and our elementary level as well. First off, we have a new state champion. The duo of Michelle Kim and San Kalp Katnalu won first place in the mystery architecture category at the state science limpiead competition this past weekend, so congratulations to them. Continuing with our high school students, soon we'll have two other state champions coming to visit with you, as is our tradition. We had two seniors. Reagan Galouli won the girls' 600-meter run in the Division One State Championships and Joey O'Brien won the boys' 300-meter dash. Our Shrewsbury High School math team earned first place in the Worcester County Math League Championship this year, is the first time since 2007. And then the Destination Imagination Program, you may recall, back in the fall, we had a team that went to the Worlds present to you. They just recently had their regional competitions and we've had eight teams who have qualified to progress to the state levels. We wish them luck. We had a variety of students who made to the All States in Symphony Hall in Boston, eight different Shrewsbury High School students. We've had students honored in the Boston Globe Scholastic Art Competition, six high school students. We've had, mentioned before, our science fair, we've now had eight high school students can qualify for the regional competition or from the regional competition at the API, earned a trip to MIT for the state science fair and engineering fair. And do want to mention, our robotics team is doing quite well, but they are hosting a major tournament this coming Saturday and Sunday at Shrewsbury High School and those are free and open to the public. There's some information in our community bulletin about specific times, but there's, if anyone's ever been to robotics competition, they're very, they're very high energy and very interesting to watch. So we encourage families to bring their children if they're interested in robotics and engineering. And then this is very hot off the press. Dr. Jones, the principal at Oak Middle School, notified me late this afternoon that some, a student-produced video that was part of a video contest for a public service announcement about anti-bullying actually earned second place in a state competition that was put on by the Massachusetts Aggression Reduction Center at Bridgewater State University. And want to congratulate the two producers of the video, Arushi Astana, who's on eight red, and Avery Krasinkowski, who's on eight blue. And they were supported, or different student council representatives, including Nicole Arides, Arushi as well, and Mackenzie Crandall presented it to the Oak School Council, the teachers and parents, recently. And that link will make sure it's on our website. It's definitely on the Student Voice website, on the Oak Middle School website as well. So congratulations to those students. I just had a chance to watch the video. It's extremely well-done. Some great messaging for our middle school students about how they can help each other and how staff can help, help students who are experiencing difficulties with bullying. And that is a lot, but we're very proud of it and happy to report that this evening as superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. The next item on our agenda is a timed scheduled appointment regarding school start time research. Last spring, a group of SHS students met with Dr. Sawyer to present information they learned as part of a school project about the potential benefits of a later school start time for adolescents. Two of these students have requested to present this information to the school committee this evening. This topic is also a goal under the committee's strategic priority of enhanced well-being of all, which specifically is to investigate, recommend, and plan for potential changes to school start times to better align with adolescent health needs for adequate sleep. The student's report is enclosed in our meeting materials, committee members, and of course, this is a great way to kick off what will be an ongoing discussion that the committee will be engaging the entire community with in the coming weeks and months. So with that, welcome to our guests. And I'll ask gentlemen to introduce yourselves or Dr. Mr. Bizidlo to do so.
Sure. So thanks for having us tonight. I think you'll find some really interesting research done by two students that are seniors who started this project in their AP US History class on the direction of Matt Brown last year. They've continued on the passion around school start time and they're happy tonight to share their findings with you as a result of culmination of their work over the last year and a half. So I'll let them introduce themselves to you and then we'll go through the presentation.
All right. My name is a Jen. I'm a senior.
My name is Joseph Andrews. I'm also a senior. Okay. So we wanted to start by saying that we're here to advocate and provide information and a student's opinion, kind of a student's perspective on this, in addition to some other information that you may or may not be aware of yet. So we're going to start with something that we found quite touching while we were researching this. And while unfortunate, it's important to look at this kind of thing. So there was a girl named Sierra Nicole Rigel in Oregon, which is a long way away from here, but something very similar to what happens here almost every day is that she had five hours of sleep. Now, a girl who actually gave permission for me to use her as a reference here, as you may know, Paulina Hroskowsky, she is on SAC. She's very, very talented, a good friend of mine. And when I asked her about it, she was like, "Five hours? That's, that's a lot. I only get four." And I was like, "Oh, wow." So it seems almost that the more successful and, you know, the more of a model student someone gets at this point, the less sleep they get, almost. And this girl, when she only had five hours of sleep, she got into an unfortunate accident on a highway, which resulted in a fatality, which thankfully was not her. But eventually, she was exonerated. And yet, this still serves as kind of a warning case for the most extreme things that can happen when a sleep epidemic or a lack of sleep epidemic hits the children in a certain region. Now, obviously, something that extreme isn't what happens every day and different things will and can happen here, but we think it's a good starting point to, you know, really start the discussion on what is really a problematic lack of sleep among our high school students. So a Jen here is going to kick us off with some scientific evidence.
So first, what are the effects of teenage sleep deprivation? Now, first and foremost, a lack of sleep causes an increase in stress, which leaves people susceptible to all sorts of physical illnesses, which can keep them out of school for longer. In addition, it can contribute to mental illnesses like depression or anxiety. As Joe mentioned, car accidents are caused by drowsy driving are also pretty common because of sleep deprivation, because of a lack of situational awareness, especially at the high school in the mornings. It can get pretty crowded, so it's necessary to be alert. Finally, you see a lot of reduced class performance, both in class assessments as well as standardized testing like the SAT or ACT, as well as attendance, both in terms of tardies and absences to those first-period classes. So what are the reasons primarily for sleep, teenage sleep deprivation? So primarily, it's the differences between the adult and teenage sleep cycles. So sleep is regulated through a series of neurotransmitters or hormones like dopamine, serotonin, and melatonin. Those are by no means like just all of them, just a few. Dopamine in particular sort of energizes the body and is attributed to a feeling of well-being. And it's used primarily in the morning to wake someone up. Serotonin sort of relaxes the body. Melatonin contributes to drowsiness throughout the day. Both of those chemicals, both dopamine and serotonin, are released later for teenagers. So this means that they'll, teenagers really only naturally wake up between eight and nine AM, which is later than adults, which is usually around seven or even six. And that also means that they can really only naturally fall asleep until later in the day, usually around 11:00 PM all the way, maybe up until 1:00 AM. This all contributes to a reduced amount of sleep compared to the eight hours that teenagers are recommended to get. In addition, melatonin is particularly important because the way it works is the concentration is dependent on the amount of blue light that sunlight has. So throughout the day, it's inhibited. And as sunlight sort of recedes, melatonin concentration builds up, which eventually triggers the body into a sleep phase. But a lot of electronic devices also emit this blue light, and that includes iPads. So if a teenager, for example, has to come home after a long day of extracurriculars and do some homework late at night, they might have their bedtime pushed further down.
So we want to start with a wide scope and talk about some national attempts. So one national attempt, before I go into this number here on the screen, is Seattle. And Seattle was a city that literally turned every single school in their city to a 9:00 AM start time. Now, that, once again, is an extreme example, but what's important to realize is that 58% of schools in the U.S., and we'll show you where that statistic comes from later, start at eight or eight AM or later already. And while I remember that a committee convened in the early 2000s to discuss this earlier, and at that time, we may have been, you know, in the lead, now, as you can see by just this number, we're almost in that place which we are lagging behind, which really surprised me because I like to think of, you know, this area is a fairly progressive, it's got great education, it's a good district. And I looked at this number, I was like, "How is it possible that we are not in the 58% that have already moved AM or later?"
All right. So the data that Joe just talked about comes from the U.S. Department of Education concerning most high schools. As you can see, a majority or like the largest percentage or portion of the pie chart has to do with schools that start between eight to eight-thirty AM. And then the next largest portion is where our school is, between 7:30 and eight. But even within that portion, it's important to note that some schools could be starting later than us, even in that portion. The second set of graphs on the right-hand side have to do with the Seattle Public Schools. Now, the top is aggregate data concerning all of the high schools in that district. And you can already see a pretty significant improvement in grades, basically from like a C-plus to a B-minus between the two years that they implemented that change. And then between, in the Ipsworth Sleepiness Scale, they also saw a drop in a point, which is better. So between zero and five is considered regular sleepiness, daytime sleepiness. Five to 10 is considered higher, but not necessarily threatening. Any higher than that, between 10 and 20 is considered significant. And even a point increase is a very significant drop in sleepiness. And then the last two sets of graphs are between two specific high schools. You don't actually see that much of a difference in the first high school, which is RHS. That's the, it's the first left-hand column. But FHS noticed a rather large decrease in the amount of attendance problems that they had, so absences and tardies. And the, although this wasn't a focus of their research, they taught, they said that this high school had a higher proportion of economically disadvantaged students who may have been working an extra job and were helped by that extra sleep.
So now we want to talk about some of the things that we've already done that have impacted our community on this issue before we even came here. So when we first started this project a while ago, I was also, and a gentleman was also in AP Statistics, right? And so we thought, why don't we give out a survey to try and gauge some popular support for this? So we handed out surveys in various homerooms around the school. And it's important to realize that they're homerooms, so it wasn't like we handed them out to the AP classes or to the A-level classes. This was, the only identifying factor that linked all of these homerooms together was literally the first letter of the last name. So therefore, it seems unlikely that there would be a whole lot of bias in the sampling. And then we moved down to the questions. We have that second question there. You can kind of ignore that. You don't really have to worry about it because we had to do that for the project. We had to propose a solution. But for that top question, which is really important and really simple, we thought, anybody will answer this if it's put on the table in front of them. Do you think that our school should start later? Yes or no? And so here are the results. So that second question, once again, you're kind of going to want to look above that to the first question, where we got 73% that said yes and only 27% that said no. And, you know, our nation often can't agree that heavily on something. So I think it's pretty good that we found that kind of popular support, even in just a preliminary test. I mean, it shows that kids really do think this is a good idea. They're not just, you know, sitting on their hands. They, they want the school to start later.
So these are just examples of schools that have already pushed the, those start times later within the Massachusetts, within Massachusetts. That includes Hingham, which we'll go into more detail in the next slide, Westboro and Concord-Carlisle. So in terms of local results, these statistics were pulled directly from a report that was emailed to us by the principal of Hingham High School. This is Paul McCann. And you can already see a pretty significant increase in the combined SAT scores, their averages, between 2002, 2003, and 2004. And between 2002 and 2003 was when they implemented that change. And then in terms of disciplinary incidents, you see a reduction in suspensions, even though in total students, as well as the amount of incidents, even though their enrollment went up over the four, three years.
So going to some benefits of later start times, just to wrap up.
So just, yeah, to conclude, in terms of first-period classes, you'd see increased attendance within those classes, which would then contribute to greater performance, both in tests and attention to the teacher. And then throughout the rest of the day, you'd also see a lot more improvements in attention and focus within classrooms.
Stuff that's a little less school-related, but still something we definitely want for our youth is road safety. There's a lot of accidents on the way to school in the morning, especially compared to other places in Drewsbury. And we would definitely see decreased accidents in the morning and less drowsy driving overall, no matter where the kid is any time of the day. And mental health, oftentimes you'll see these, a lot of students who say they're suffering from anxiety, they're suffering from depression, or they're just extremely overworked and stressed. And there is nothing that more commonly factors into the equation for almost everything relating to mental health than the amount of sleep that you are getting. And when they get more sleep, their mental health will improve.
Excellent. Well, I appreciate the presentation. Thank you for the time and effort that you put into that. Appreciate having you here. Colleagues, questions and comments for our presenters. Dr. McGee.
So this was terrific. Yeah, I think it's a good presentation. I'm glad you did it. I'm glad you did it now because we're, as Mr. Palich said, about to try to get something done regarding what you'd like to see. A few years ago, we looked into this and then it kind of moved to the back burner for a while. But this is one of the areas where, as I delved into the science, there's remarkably little controversy. It's pretty settled science. And the issues regarding behavioral problems, mood disturbances, attendance, performance, all good. Doesn't seem to be much of a downside. I, during that time, I attended some forums in Newton and in Westboro. And one of the interesting things to me was that resistance in Newton was coming from students, who said, "I'm under enough pressure and you just took an hour away from my day." And so I'm so glad to see that it seems that among the students, we've got support here, which is a good thing. Another point of resistance is parents who have, I think, were surrounded by people who are running right at their red line. And, and so if you change anything, you, there's a domino effect on their whole day. Do you have any perception as to how parents would greet this?
Well, we went over this a lot with Mr. Bizidlo and with Dr. Sawyer, actually. We were looking at things that parents could say, that they might say. And I think the thing that you have to look at is that there's always going to be opposition. No matter what you do, there'll always be opposition. I know my dad especially would be relieved to stop having to get me up in the morning over and over again. But in general, I think that there might definitely be some resistance to start with, but maybe once some more of the health benefits are explained, maybe once the public gets some more information or there are suitable alternatives for things that parents usually rattle off about, like athletics and, you know, childcare and all of this. Once it seems like maybe there's solutions out there for this stuff, then maybe the reaction would soften.
Thanks. This is Fritz.
Thank you. I think it's very helpful for us to always hear from a student perspective because you guys are living it. We're not, so thank you for that. Just two questions. What was the size of your sample?
Jen, you remember, I think it was like 72, 80? I think.
106.
106.
And the second question, in the report, we have you talk about, no, I need my glasses, implementing a rotating schedule in order to dismiss, dismiss athletes and sports early. Can you tell us what, what is that? What are you talking about with that?
Sure. So when we were just talking about it, because for our project, we did need to come up with a solution, we were thinking, here, here's a problem, which is that when students need to get out for sports, they need to get out for sports and they need to get out earlier maybe than this new start time would allow. Now, all thing that other schools do is they start, they let the athletes out early. And I think if you did that right now, seventh-period teachers would just be so mad. But there's a lot of reasons, and this is one of them, why one might want to initiate a rotating schedule. It would reduce the amount of disproportionate damage that you take if you are late a lot to your first-period class. And it would allow a seventh-period class to dismiss athletes 15 to 30 minutes early without worrying about the fact that they're never going to get to teach their athletes anything because the next day it'll be somebody else. So that's why we kept the solution.
In addition to that, teachers could plan around a rotating schedule. So if they know that their kids are going to be tired in the mornings, they could schedule a test or some kind of assessment for when their class is going to be fifth period or later in the day.
Thank you.
This is Gonzano.
Thank you. This report was really helpful. It made a lot of sense, a lot of good sense. And, and I like how you have a lot of supporting data. So my question for you is, how did this come to be? What was it in your APUSH class that triggered this kind of research?
So we had, we were tasked with basically coming up with a project for our final project. And we got to decide anything, whatever topic that we were particularly interested in. That ranged throughout the class between like helping out economically disadvantaged students with their books. And in our case, later start times, in particular, the science that had come out recently piqued both of our interests. So we actually like independently came up with the ideas and then joined forces.
That's great. Thank you.
Excellent. Dr. McGee.
So just one more. Just getting back to that 70-plus percent that approved of this idea. Was there much in the way of discussion or education of the student body regarding start times before you did your survey?
So funnily enough, there wasn't a lot before we did the survey. But as we were going around the class, talking to people about it, you know, just because we were, we went around. I remember talking to people. I remember athletes would say stuff like, "Well, where are the athletics going to go?" And I mean, there was resistance from the athletes. I remember two of the people that I, that were, I thought of as, you know, very high performers, Tom O'Neill and Lauren Polito, I don't know if you know either of them, said, "Yeah, we'd love the extra sleep." And Paulina, who I mentioned earlier, who only sleeps four hours, said, "No, I don't want the less time," which I thought was ironic. But yeah, we definitely got some resistance, which is why I would take our survey with a grain of salt. Because while the results are favorable, we are by no means statisticians. So, yeah.
Colleagues, anything further? I appreciate the thorough and clear-eyed assessment you've brought to us tonight. I think that this is a great way, hearing your perspective, to kick off again what I mentioned. It's going to be an ongoing dialogue that the school committee engages in, not just among ourselves, but with the entire community, obviously. This is the type of decision that is going to impact families well beyond, as Dr. McGee alluded to, well beyond just what happens inside the school setting. So this is something that we look forward to engaging the community with in the weeks and months to come. Dr. Sawyer, anything to add?
And we certainly want to give Mr. Bizidlo an opportunity as well, but I would just start by thanking John and Joe on doing the research and then being eager to share it with both the school principal as well as with myself and requesting to come before the committee. And what our initial task is really, and I think when we were discussing this a couple of years ago, with the, when the calendar committee was approaching this, was around looking at districts where it ended up maybe being presented but not going anyplace. Oftentimes, there seemed that there wasn't time spent upfront doing some of the educational pieces. And as Joe mentioned earlier, I think that's some of the work that this can be the beginning of. And I think if we take more time over the course of the coming weeks and months, and then particularly rev up with the new school year, when a lot of people are paying a lot of attention to what's happening with the schools. And then, you know, part of our response, work will be to look at some of the logistics of how we can solve these pieces. Rotating schedules is one of the things that would be possible if we're able to decouple our high school faculty and our middle school faculty. We have some shared staff that lock our schedules in right now. So that's an investment that's actually on the table right now for consideration in our budget plan. We also, as part of that budget plan, Mr. Collins had added a line for somewhere in the order of about $15,000, I think, for consultation services, for a transportation expert who could look at our transportation needs and talk about, you know, what it would take to do different types of approaches. One of the real barriers, of course, to this is not only around regenerating schedules and high school activities, but it's actually, we, like many other school districts, run on a three-tiered bus system where we have high school, then middle school, and then elementary. And whether or not flipping something, which I know Westboro did with their, they have a fourth, fifth, and sixth grade school, they just flipped the times with their high school. And it's the first year they've been doing it. We're eager to learn more from Westboro, how that's going in their first year. But in terms of condensing, you know, to give the example of Seattle, if all of our schools went to school at nine o'clock, you can imagine there's going to be a proportionally huge increase in the amount of buses we'd have to put on the road. And that comes with very significant cost. And so the, there's a whole lot of question anymore about the benefit, as Dr. McGee indicated, and as your research showed. And the question is, how can we determine logistically what's possible and provide some options for the school committee to consider with substantial public input, of course, including from students. But I also agree that having students present this right now, as we sort of kick off this campaign to educate people about the issue, is um, is really, uh, says a lot about the way we do try to cultivate student voice and provide some opportunity, again, for real world type of research and projects in their, in their classwork. So, again, well, job well done. And, uh, I don't know, Mr. Basilo wants to add anything?
No, I just want to, uh, thank, uh, both boys for their presentation. I think it's definitely student-generated. The principal wasn't asking anyone to do this. They presented to Dr. Sawyer and I earlier in the fall to talk about, uh, their concerns with it. They met with us, at least met with me last spring, to talk about some of their thoughts around it, some of the obstacles that communities face. I think when we met with the calendar and school start time committee last, I think it might have been two years ago, there was resistance within the student group, particularly around athletics and co-curriculars and timing, and, and the fear of losing additional hours of sleep, uh, just pushing everything a little bit later. But I think the science is, uh, solid. Um, and I think you'll find more and more school districts, particularly in Eastern Mass, the Route Three corridor in particular, on the South Shore have moved to eight or later, uh, and taken a real stance around the league in terms of the health of the students within their own community. So, um, we'll be, I'm interested to see how this plays out. I do appreciate Mr. Brown, uh, prov- providing students some opportunity and autonomy in terms of their own learning and finding something that they can really dig into and are passionate about, and really report back the benefits that could help all students in our school. So kudos to Mr. Brown, the APUS last year, and kudos to the boys for, uh, following through. They no longer have that course and they're still, uh, plodding along. So thanks to them.
And, uh, we do have a certificate of recognition for each of you. So if you'd like to come up and shake the committee's hand and receive that, uh, we really appreciate your time and your effort on this. Thanks, Joe. Appreciate it. John, good job. Well done. Thank you, Joe. Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is a time-scheduled appointment. It is a report from the MS Boston College, Collins Center for Public Management. Uh, by way of background, the School Department engaged the Collins Center for Public Management at the University of Massachusetts at Boston to do an organizational study of the district's central office position and functions. Representatives from the Collins Center are here with us this evening to present a report on their initial findings and recommendations, and listen to feedback from committee members as well as the administration in advance of finalizing their report. The initial draft report was sent to committee members under separate. Could please begin by introducing yourselves?
Sure. Good evening. Thanks for having us here. I'm Ann Wilson.
I'm Ed Gottgart.
And I'm Ray Shortliff. Thank you for the invitation this evening, and, uh, unfortunately, it's a tough act to follow. Try to make it as interesting as possible for you. So it's great to see the students jump into, on these types of important issues. So, um, I think that we have, uh, outlined an agenda for you. Uh, a small number of presentations and slides, and then opening it up for questions that you might have. Uh, we did have the opportunity to in- interview each one of you, um, or two of you in one group individually. So we've had a chance to go through this process. The purpose of the study is, as was indicated, uh, a study of organizational structure, staffing and practices of central administration. A study of the organizational staffing and practices of the instructional and academic programs and the special education program. A survey of central office and leadership positions in similar-sized school districts, and there were eleven of them, uh, particularly those that have faced and addressed increased enrollment, student enrollment and facility and staffing challenges. And then finally, a series of recommendations for an enhanced central office organizational structure. So that's what, uh, those are our goals. Uh, we, we met with forty, uh, individuals in either one-on-one sessions or small group sessions. And, uh, we also did an online, uh, survey of eleven districts. Uh, that was essentially the methodology that we used. We had twenty-four questions on our online survey, and I know that we've been working in the last day or so to produce a copy of that online survey. I don't think the school.
They did receive it earlier.
Okay, so, uh, we ran into some glitches. Uh, our purpose tonight is to, uh, give you an opportunity as school committee members to kind of give us some additional feedback. We've, we've had a couple of sessions that we've met with the superintendent and the leadership team. This is sort of like the last or next-to-last session in which we get some more feedback from what we have, uh, laid out as, as your challenges, functions, recommendations, et cetera. Our hope is that over the next two days, we will finalize our final stage draft, send it to the superintendent, and he and his leadership team can take one more last look at it. And then I have to send it to my colleagues at the Collins Center, and they kind of, uh, put it all in, in, in good order. They set the standard for what a, a study should look like. So I can't guarantee when they get that back, but it'll be sooner rather than later. So that's kind of the next day, next step process. And we have some, um, findings we'd like to share with you and, uh, give my, turn it over to my colleagues.
I get the, the good job of commending, uh, and we want to commend your staff. Uh, all the staff who we, we interviewed, all the staff who met with us, were extremely well-prepared. They were candidly open, honest, sincere about their own positions and those of, of their peers in, in the central office. It was refreshing. It was informative. As you know, we're relying significantly on the feedback of, of individuals to provide the substance for our study. So it was refreshing to have that kind of hon- honest, open dialogue with the staff. And I have to commend the leadership, um, for giving their staff the, the wherewithal and the support to be honest and to be open and to be sincere about, uh, what they see are the strengths and the weaknesses of the central office. So I commend the, uh, the leadership for providing that kind of an environment. Couple of, uh, other commendations. One, which, uh, we are going to mention in the report, there is a, uh, an organically developed group within the central office called COAST, the Central Office Administrative Support Team. This is, uh, across, uh, departments, uh, I think the, the business office, uh, the HR department, some other departments, have their support staff meeting on a regular basis. That's their own meeting. It's not something that was dictated by the central office. This is something organically that grew out of, out of communications between the support staff. We think that's terrific, and we think it's worthy of, of, of making note of that. They, they keep agenda, they rotate the, the chair of those meetings, uh, they keep notes. It's, it's really extraordinary, and, and you're to be commended for that. And I think lastly, uh, I, I commend all of you, the, the leadership in the school committee, particularly for participating in this. This has been a very useful exercise for us to hear your perspective as well. Um, so those are the, uh, those are the commendations I would have. In terms of that second bullet, uh, the dependence on manual processes, anytime a district, and Shrewsbury's not alone, anytime a district comes, uh, up to a situation where we've been doing things manually for so many years, there are two major factors that, that prevent us from taking that next step, to take a look at, at what, what, what we can do to, to make those manual processes, either automate them or in some way, shape, or form change them, or maybe discard them. The first is, you need to know what it is you want to do. And, uh, that's pretty evident. We've got a lot of feedback from, from your staff about the kinds of things that they think are ripe for addressing as an issue within, uh, within this bullet of, um, what can we do to, to automate, to move to the next level? The second, so first of all, it's, and there's a lot of, of, uh, information out there. There are a lot of school districts that have tried things, there are a lot of companies that may sell you services or sell you software and those kinds of things. Somebody's got to weed through all of that and figure out what's right for Shrewsbury. So that's the first challenge. The second challenge is, once you figure out what you, what it is you want to do, doing it, getting the staff time, uh, getting the opportunities for the kinds of collaboration that are going to be required, because usually these, uh, conversion from manual systems to something more automated, it cuts across many departments. It cuts across maybe the entire district. So those are the two things. And we're going to talk a little bit more about that last one. Having the time, the opportunity to flesh out what it is that Shrewsbury needs to do in terms of, uh, moving forward, in term, uh, in, in terms of manual processes and, and addressing them, uh, in a very suc- successful way. I'm going to turn it over to my counterpart here, my colleague, for the next bullet.
So support for strategic goals, um, is something that's extremely important. And I'll go back to commendations for one moment. One of the other things that was really obvious of all the people we spoke with, they're very supportive of the direction of the district. They're very supportive of the initiatives and what's happening. There are things that everyone's grappling with, but there is huge support for that. And I, I think that is, it needs mention that your goals really center on important topics for school districts across the country, maybe across the world at this point. You're focusing on high-quality programming, um, educational programming. You're focusing on how to deal with the increased enrollment. And that includes, you know, space, staffing, oversight and support. So multifaceted, and it goes across, it goes across all dimensions of operating the school system. You're into some key global initiatives around social, emotional learning, inclusion. And then, and then now this focus also on well-being, not only for students, but for staff as well. Professional development, that came out loud and clear. It's in your goals, but it also came out loud and clear in our interviews. The hunger for that, this is, these, you don't have staff that is resisting learning or is resisting wanting to go further. They want this, and they, they understand what's involved. Um, and then the community partnerships, the focus there and the focus on project-based learning, which is extremely important, um, for our students as they move into the next phase of their education or the work world. Um, so that support is there, the desire to be able to support those initiatives, and the pride that we heard about those initiatives, um, I think really sets up for success and will allow the system, once some enhancements are made, to really continue and for people to feel as if they can make progress. Uh, because that was one of the things that we did here. People were like, really wanting to do well, but there are a few things that are holding back a bit. So, um, and that goes into the next topic, which is workload. While working towards these strategic goals, it's become apparent that the workload of the staff and administration has increased significantly. And some staff reported actually the necessity to work beyond typical hours. Um, and for those of us having been an administrator, superintendent, uh, it, we were always working past hours. Um, however, the support staff is expressing that as well, and, um, I know that has led to overtime, um, costs as well. Others express not being able to do the high-quality work they desire, um, just within any reasonable amount of time. So that's another piece of it, and that ties into what I said earlier about that desire and that, uh, attention to these goals and the, the feeling of teamwork around achieving the goals. Through our survey of comparable districts, we identified, um, that the supervision and evaluation responsibilities of several of your central office administrators far exceeds that of, of those comparable districts. So that's something that, that we're going to be making some recommendations around. And some contributing factors, other contributing factors to this workload is the increased data use, um, and reporting requirements of the state. Shift from manual to electronic strategies. The district has moved forward in some areas and are trying to move forward in other areas, but this requires more time, as Ed talked about, for professional development. And the idea of collaboration among the people who are using this, these new strategies. And then the need for time to acquire that training. I have the next one as well. Data analysis. Again, all of these areas really are interrelated. None of these are in silos by themselves. There is an increased need for data analysis to make informed decisions, and this is around educational matters and around operational matters as well. And you have less staff in that area. There is a need across the district with respect for data for instructional purposes. This connects to the workload in, in that, the area of, um, curriculum instruction and assessment, as well as the area of student services. There's a great need to focus on the logistics of collecting, analyzing and reporting data. The need to learn about new operating systems and the ability to implement processes that facilitate efficiency and effectiveness. These all require time and expertise and professional development. Through our survey and the review of the various other, um, districts, um, not only the survey questions, but we looked at their organizational charts as well to go try to dig a little bit deeper and see, um, what types of reporting structures they had. We did note that there is a, a lack of adequate data analyst supports, um, here in Shrewsbury, um, as compared to these other districts. So we'll be, we'll be making some recommendations there. Turn it back over to Ed.
Yeah, in terms of the staffing structure and the reporting structure, uh, we will be producing some organizational charts. Now, these are just our perceptions, our, our recommendations. They're not in concrete, chiseled in concrete. It really is up to the superintendent and his staff and the school committee to decide ultimately what's right for Shrewsbury. But we will give you some ideas about what we think would be a, a, a better organizational structure, including some additional staff positions to address some of the things that, that we've identified before. And we also are very, very sensitive to the idea of the, the reporting structure, the reporting, uh, relationships, supervision and evaluation responsibilities. You've got some, some of your, your leaders who have way beyond what, what's a reasonable expectation. And that's not fair to them, and it's not fair to the people whom they supervise. So we, we did a lot of, uh, thinking about how we could s- spread the, the responsibilities in such a way, not to lose the integrity of the structure, but really to improve the, uh, the supervision and evaluation and the reporting. And then time for collaboration and communication. Couldn't, couldn't highlight anything more important than that. You've got a staff that's ready, willing, and able to do the work that's necessary to move this district forward in terms of its, its structure, in terms of its accountability, in terms of its productivity. But they need time, and they need the opportunities to do that. Couple of ways you can do that, one of, one of which is, is looking at the staffing to see if there are additional positions that might alleviate that, that issue. Some of it is looking at the efficiency of the people within certain positions. Could we make them more efficient either through, uh, some of these things? So, so that's what you're going to see in our report, is, is kind of an overall perspective on how can we suggest and recommend, uh, the district move forward in terms of, uh, its central office administration and organization.
And the other thing, um, I just wanted to add one more thing that we didn't touch on. Um, we also took a look at the physical space, and when we're thinking about time and the ability of the leadership team to collaborate, um, having the student services assistant superintendent in a, in a separate location provides some problem. Um, it, it's a little bit of a, a, um, a disconnect. Um, it makes it much more difficult for that ongoing collaboration. And we know that the space is an issue, but we wanted to make sure that we did highlight that, and especially with some of the other recommendations for potentially expanding that leadership team. We want that to be at the top of your thinking.
And there are some other kind of lower-level space considerations that, that we're factoring in, having to do like with the registrar and the registrar's office and, and that function. I'm done.
Okay. Uh, let me just add, we mentioned organizational charts. Uh, we have essentially five organizational charts, uh, from each district, and, and we also look at Shrewsbury. Student Services, Curriculum Instruction Assessment, the Business Office, HR, and the Superintendent's Office and his reporting responsibilities. So we look at Needham, Natick, and Shrewsbury. And we have proposed some organizational charts for Shrewsbury. So you'll have a chance to kind of drill down and, and look at that in a, a snapshot. In terms of findings and recommendations, we have eleven major categories of findings. In a total of, uh, thirty-five separate findings within those categories with forty-four different recommendations. And, uh, we are not going to go through forty-four recommendations tonight. So it's in print, and you can take a look at it. Uh, but there are some critical ones that I think we need to, to, to highlight. Recommend the reducing, eliminate the manual processes. I don't need to kind of repeat that, but that's pretty important stuff. This is a, uh, for better or for worse, it's predominantly a paper system in Shrewsbury. It's been the Shrewsbury way, and, and I'd like to tell you, the only district in the state that's in, in that situation, but that's not true, you know? It, it's a lot of district, uh, because maybe it's worked, but it, it has created other kind of challenges. To review the supervision responsibilities, to see how that can be tweaked. The evaluation system puts burdens on, on every single school district in Massachusetts, and, and it's a challenge. It's an also an opportunity. Sometimes, uh, our view is that central office administrators and principals can be overwhelmed with those, uh, evaluation responsibilities and supervision responsibilities. So we, we highlight that as a challenge for the district to look at, to see if there can be some equity. You have a new person, uh, coming on, hopefully in an assistant superintendent position, which we will talk about in a moment as a recommendation. And hopefully that, uh, position can take on some evaluation responsibilities in support of, of his or her colleagues, uh, as you move forward, you know? Easy for us to say that. We've not seen a full, uh, final job description, et cetera. But hopefully that will be part of the, of the process and the equity across leadership positions. Uh, we've made a series of recommendations, uh, around central administration, data analysis, and welcome center. And I'd like to go over them. There, I plucked them out of the report. I don't know whether they had a chance to read, read the report. But we are recommending adding an educational data analysis position to, in CI. But we are recommending adding an educational data analysis position to, in CIA in particular to facilitate access to data collection and data analysis. It's very clear that it's a need that you need to look at and see if you can add a position in that. We're not saying it should be this year, we're not saying when it should be, but you really need to take a look at that to see if that can happen. There needs to be a budget analyst data reporting position. Among the four current administrative support positions in student services, that's not a new position, it's a kind of a realignment of responsibilities to kind of focus on budget analysis and data reporting. We clearly feel that there should be a welcoming center here in central office or somewhere in the district that human resource staff should not serve as central office receptionists. And I think that the whole central office would benefit from a welcome center, administrative assistant to welcome and assist all visitors to central office and to be cross-trained to, to work with student registration and/or other needs in, in central office. But clearly a welcoming center for new parents, new families, for people coming to the district with questions, new staff, et cetera. But it should not be, should not fall upon the HR assistants or anyone other assistants in central office, in an ideal world. And we're making these recommendations, they may, may not be able to happen right away. The business office, we've done a careful analysis and Ed in particular, working with, Mr. Collins, that we're recommending a new middle management position in the business office, title to be determined by, by, by you folks, but there is clear need for that support, particularly to support in the areas of transportation and safety. There are other, other needs too. I think all of these recommendations, all of them connect to students in one way, shape, form or another, and families. The last one is that, and when I, I know I made the recommendation in a separate memo to you, the district should implement this new position for assistant superintendent for community partnerships and well-being. It is needed. It's been discussed for a couple of years in the district. We clearly see a, a, a need for it. It's been well documented by the superintendent and, and others in our discussions. So I think that's the essence of our recommendations. We're open to whatever questions that you have, clarification or otherwise.
Great. Well, we thank you for the time that you've put into this report and for your presentation this evening. I'm going to turn it over to my colleagues for questions and feedback for our representatives from the Collins Center. Mrs. Fritz.
Really more comment, I think my colleagues agree. I think we have an exceptional school district, but there's always room for improvement, no matter what business you're in, there's always room for improvement. And I think your report, the draft that we read, it really echoes a lot of the concerns and even some of the highlights or suggestions we thought might, so I think we're all on the same track, which is great. One thing that jumps out to me is the, the technology piece and, you know, the manual, I mean, we are very manual and, you know, if we have technology, we're going to save time and money moving to an automated process in a lot of areas. But change is scary and unsettling and you need to train for it and all that. So I think, I personally think that's an area that we really need to move toward. But then we also have budget constraints with a lot of this. So there's a lot of things that we need to do. I just hope we can, but I've, after reading this, I think, I personally felt, oh good, we're, we're all on the same track, thinking along the same way. So thank you. I think it validates to the public some of the things that we've talked about for many years.
Mr. Wensky.
Yeah, in addition to that, I, I think the demands on data are well-stated in the report. Clearly we have our own demands of school committee, depending on what, what season we're in. And you mentioned, I think, two types of roles. You mentioned the educational data and then also budget analyst. Are those, they're two separate roles or could, could one role handle that or they need to be separated?
We called it out as two separate roles because the needs are, are a bit different. And I think that just from what we heard of the need in the curriculum instruction and assessment department, I don't know that you could, you could share that position. I think that there, there aren't a lot of other administrative, there's one administrative assistant in that department. There aren't any other support roles that could really take on some of that. So that's why we, we recommended the two, one in the, one for the student services and one for CIA.
Sure. I also thought the, the welcome center addition was an interesting one, especially for onboarding just new educators or faculty and then fielding questions from families that are moving into town. You know, certainly having HR director, maybe a few assistants might not be enough there to handle just that, you know? So I think that's, that's good insight.
The student services position, if you think about it, it's 30% of your operating budget. It's all your circuit breaker. It's your Medicaid funding reimbursements. It's a lot of potential revenue coming to the town and expense money going out. It really needs to be monitored very closely. And special education has a, has a unique perspective on that. I, I don't think it resides in the business office. I think the business office can certainly support that. But I think, I think both the business office and the special ed department would benefit by having someone who's a controller type, type person watching over the, the funds that are going out as well as the funds that are coming in.
Dr. McGee.
So a question and a comment. The question first, and that has to do with the data. I think we're all focusing on that data piece because we're, we're very concerned about it. We see it as an opportunity for us to really improve the, the central office staff function. It's, I, I think we all recognize the need and sometimes the knowledge as to how best to solve the problem is, is the big barrier, as, as you mentioned it. And I know that when you introduce new software into an office or a business, it could be a way to make things faster, more accurate, less work, everything good. Or it could be a way to bring the place to a stop and to hemorrhage money.
That's exactly right.
And I, I just, I feel like the value of your report would be tremendously enhanced if some guidance were given that way. I can, I can tell you that in 2002, we went to an electronic medical record in my medical office. And one of the most valuable things for me was to find out who had an electronic medical record. And then I went around and visited their offices and watched them work and talked to them and, and tried to see what the strengths and weaknesses were. And that was very helpful to us. And I wonder if, as part of your report, you may be able to give us some examples of districts that have got it right and who happen to be using some software that works so that perhaps our staff could visit them and see what's, what's what. So that's, that's my request slash question. The, the comment is that I think we all agree about the necessity for this, this report. We, I think, support the recommendations in, in general. But as a committee and as a district, I think we have to set some very concrete timelines and goals and price tags and the like to, to go through the, the hard work of implementing it. Once you turn it in, I'd hate to see it just gather dust. So it's one thing we need to commit ourselves to.
Certainly. Thank you.
If I could address the first question about, in talking with Mr. Collins, the town has some interesting possibilities for collaboration. UNIS, some, some features of the UNIS reporting system might be adaptable to, to the school department. I would imagine they probably very much are. There are little components of UNIS, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but they, they have these various features that, that districts can, but, you know, it takes time and it takes money, as you suggest, to do that. And the other is, is I'm sure the Mass Association of School Business Officials, they award usually to districts that do an excellent job in terms of reporting and, and those kinds of things. So I think we have access through MasBo to, to find some districts that do a, a really crack, crackerjack job in terms of updating their systems and being on the cutting edge of data collection, et cetera. So I think we have some resources.
That would be very valuable.
Thank you. Mrs. Consano.
Thank you so much. It was a really, really valuable report. My questions have been answered because my colleagues asked them. So my comment then is to thank you. It was really helpful to have this third party come in and for me to hear how, how hard central office is working and the staff and, and how they're aligned with our strategic goals and initiatives. I think probably, you know, the hardest part was when you talked about how they want to do high-quality work and can't always do it, how frustrating that is. I think we all understand that, so. But I think that this report and you coming tonight highlights that problem and also this tremendous strength that we have in the people, which is, you know, I think what Shrewsbury is all about. It's about the people here, so. So thank you for coming tonight and, and presenting this to us. It was really, really helpful.
And I'll echo everything Mrs. Consano said, but a, a comment or some comments that I want to make less to you folks and thank you again for your report tonight, but much more to my colleagues and to the community at large. As I read this draft report and as I listened to this discussion now, what occurs to me, we are seeing in this report the other side of a coin that we in fact have actually been very proud of. Shrewsbury has long been a district that spends far less than comparable peers in the field of administration. And that's a source of pride. Why? Because as school committee members and indeed as a community, we have always valued the vast majority of every dollar going directly into the classroom. We are not a district that has the most money, but we achieve incredible results because we invest our resources wisely. It has always been a focus of this committee and this administration to make sure as much of our dollars are spent directly in the classroom as possible. That continues to be a source of pride and I like the fact that we are so efficient. But there's a consequence to that. We are seeing in this report several decades of minimal investment in administrative capacity coming home to roost. The people who are seated to my right this evening are all talented professionals of the highest caliber, who each time we go through a budget cycle where we have to defer investments, cut a little here, cut a little there, and, you know, it's the old Shrewsbury story, we get [inaudible] to the program, but there are little things here or there. There are little things that build over time. And what is especially clear to me from this report is how many of those little things are being borne by our district leadership team and the burdens that they face. So I am very appreciative of what we've learned from this report. I think we have now seen, as has been mentioned, we now have a third party coming in and laying out some very useful recommendations. And I absolutely want to echo Dr. McGee's point, I would hate for this to gather dust on a shelf. This is something that we're going to need to pursue. We will not have the resources probably to do everything. And certainly even if we manage to do the lion's share, we're not going to be able to do it quickly. There are some, I'll call them low-hanging fruit items, that I think we might be able to do faster than others and I am fully on board with doing them. This is going to take some time. This is going to take some focus from all of us, from the administration and the committee to keep our eye on this. So I certainly, I was pleased by this report in that I am pleased we have these recommendations laid out. I can't say I was terribly surprised because this is the natural consequence to a district that has gone so far out of its way to avoid strictly administrative expenditures for so many years. So with that, I'll turn it over to, oh, Mrs. Fritz, go ahead.
When, because we're talking about adding, anytime you add staff, it kind of gets more of a laser focus, no matter what organization you're in. I think any of those suggestions or recommendations, if you could make those as robust as possible with your expert opinion and reasons, because for, you know, we're kind of close to it, but, you know, somebody in the public reading it might not understand, you know, why these things are specifically needed. So I think that those pieces being as robust as possible would be helpful. Thank you.
Certainly. Colleagues, anything further? I want to turn it over to Dr. Sawyer, anything he'd like to add.
Thank you. And I, I certainly will open it up to my colleagues as well, if that's okay with, with the chair in terms of any other comments they have. But in terms of just starting by saying that, yeah, I appreciate the insights that were provided by these experts from the UMass Collins Center. Again, I think I echo the committee in that nothing was particularly surprising. I do want to begin by saying again how, how very proud I am of the staff with whom I have the opportunity to work, the, the support staff in our central office and our student services office and certainly my administrative colleagues. And I'm very pleased that the school committee, and I believe it was in a workshop this past summer, talked about finding ways and determining ways that we can look at the issue of capacity around the, the functions that we're responsible for. And to have what some of the things that I was trying to present validated by an expert third party, I think is very important. It occurs to me that some, some, one of the pieces that I recall learning about in my doctoral program relative to teachers, when you're trying to get change in the classroom, and Richard L. Moore, then a lot of writing about school reform, talks about the reciprocity of accountability and capacity. And certainly it's important that we, as an organization, when we're talking about the, the business functions and the administrative functions, are certainly accountable, we're accountable to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in a whole host of ways. We are accountable, of course, to the local taxpayers and, and the community who supports us. We're accountable to our staff who are out performing the educational mission. And of course, most importantly, we're accountable to the students whom we serve in terms of making sure the organization runs well so that the teaching and learning can happen in the field. And, and so, and I, I don't think any one of my colleagues in, in any of the offices shies away from being accountable. But it, it does become frustrating when there's a sense of lack of capacity, whether that capacity is time or whether that capacity is the tools or whether that capacity is the people to do the job. And that's, I am, I'm eager to, to get to work thinking about what, how we can take these recommendations and findings and start to craft a plan that can really start to move the needle and enable these things to happen. Because there's great people who can do great things, but if the capacity's not there, you know, frustration will be the result. So again, I appreciate the, the report. I don't know if there's anything my, my colleagues would like to add at this point.
Sure. Go ahead.
I just want, I think Aaron said it best when you talked about the power of Shrewsbury is our people. And I think it is really important that we invest in the people in terms of bringing professional development to our central office staff and furthering the work they started with COAST as we would with any learner. And I think there's always an opportunity to, to do better. As Sandy said, I'm eager to hear how our organization charts can compare to other districts. And we don't have to reinvent the wheel in terms of looking at technological solutions or strategies. I think there, if there are districts out there that can inform our process, it would be really helpful to know more about them. So thank you.
Yeah, I guess I would just add first that, you know, I appreciate the support of the school committee to actually have us engage in this study. And certainly, you know, the, the purpose of the report was to, you know, assess the current conditions and give us some ideas from their expertise and their interviews on how to proceed and, and get better. It wasn't devised as a report to provide lots of commendations or talk about past history or things like that. And there are, you know, while the, the report is clearly reflective of all the collective input, you know, it lays bare those areas where we need to improve. And sometimes that can be hard to read in, in a, in a public setting, if you will. But we are, you know, wanting to do the work, we want to improve. And I think in many cases, as was said earlier, that, you know, there, there's a fair amount of, I think I know, just my colleagues and, and business office staff, there's a fair amount of, you know, we know what needs to be done. And we have some good ideas about how, although we should explore others for certain. It's, it, you know, the, the, the challenge is the, you know, who is going to and when are, when is the work going to get done? So there's no lack of will. It's really about the resources, the right resources in the right places to make effective progress. And also, as was mentioned earlier, to, you know, help us get to that next level and achieve our strategic priorities, which we all want to do. And we all want to be successful with that. So thank you for the report.
I would just like to mention that I'd like to thank our staff because I think as the Collins Center rightly pointed out, they're very extraordinary people. And the amount of work and effort, I, when the staff came to me and said, oh, we formed this committee and we named it COAST and, you know, that they just wanted to improve processes themselves. And when they started sharing their minutes and their agendas, it was extraordinary. You really don't often see that. So I appreciate that that was called out in the report. And I want to say a public thank you to all central office employees because they are very committed people, very hardworking, very creative and innovative. Thank you.
So I couldn't agree more, Barb. And I want to extend the committee's thanks to everybody in central office for the work that they continue to do. So with that, we appreciate your presentation this evening. We look forward to your final report with great interest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is another time-scheduled appointment regarding the Beal School Building Project. It is an update and vote on proprietary items. Ms. Catherine Crockett, who is the president of Lamro Pagano Associates, and Mr. Walter Hartley, who is the project manager- Hartley, who is the project manager for PMA Associates, will present to the committee and explain these items and what is being requested of the committee this evening. Supportive materials were also included in our meeting books, and of course, Mrs. Fritz continues to be the school committee's representative on the building committee, so we'll see if she has anything to add after. But with that, thank you for your patience this evening, and we will turn it over to Ms. Crockett and Mr. Hartley.
Thank you. I just wanted to introduce myself to everyone. Paul Queenie has left PMA after 26 years, so I'm stepping in for him. Worked on the library project with the other building committee, so happy to be back. Spent a little time down in Carver building another school and ready to go up here again.
Excellent. Welcome.
We have a little bit of a update for where we are right now. I think everyone knows, we just submitted the design development package to win module six of the MSBA program, DD. We have two other submissions, a 60% and 90% construction, and then closeout. Earlier in March, we had a design development estimate reconciliation. Happy to say we're trending on budget right now. We submitted that package and it's supplement to the MSBA February 20th, and then again on March 7th with the supplemental. I believe we have a, did we leave it back there? The full package, if anyone wants to take a look at it, but that's on file with LPA and also at the MSBA. Anytime you want to jump in on anything, feel free.
Yeah, it's also in the town manager's office, and Mr. Collins has an electronic copy, so.
It's a big submission.
Well available, yes.
Yeah, it's 3,000-plus pages. So, just a quick update on where we are on kind of construction. I think most people know that the Board of Selectmen did vote to approve reconfiguring Lake Street and allowing us to close down Lake Street for a period of roughly three to four months. So, that's going to help the construction manager, Fontaine, get in there and really get that roadway safe as we're getting ready for construction. So, the way that the construction packages are going to work is we're going to have an early site enabling and demo abatement, so all the buildings and the roadway is going to come down to the correct grades. Those buildings will be removed. As that process is happening, LPA is going to be moving forward with their design for structural steel and foundations. As the site enabling wraps up, you know, the next piece of that puzzle is the foundations and steel. Those will be going up to bid in later, later in August. Again, those will continue to progress, and then we work towards a final design for September 23rd, with the final piece being the 149A trade contractors that'll be, needed to be bid, along with the remaining scopes of the CM at risk. Hopefully, looking for a GMP, a guaranteed maximum price, probably December at the earliest, early January, right around there.
So, just very quickly on that, this method of early bid packages is different than what we use for Sherwood. We've been working with Fontaine Brothers collectively, looking at the schedule. This is really about advancing the schedule and about weather. It's, so, we're excited. We're looking to shovels in the ground late May, early June, demolition of the Glavine Center, starting things off, and really starting to shift dirt around and get the shape of the site together to support the building plan. And we have been meeting with the planning board on the actual site plan approval, including the Lake Street realignment as part of that permitting process. But as Walter said, the balance of the design will continue all the way through the summer.
So, the main reason we're here tonight is kind of a combined Mass General law and also Mass School Building Authority requirements for proprietary specs. I believe in your package, there should be 11 recommendations from the designers, engineers. So, just a quick definition of the MGL definition of proprietary items and why they're used and why they're required. They're for sound reasons in the public interest, and they need to be backed up in writing by the awarding authority. They are used for making sure that towns are able to save money in the long term and upfront. So, Shrewsbury has a long history of using the same items in a lot of their buildings so that their maintenance staffs can be extremely, extremely efficient in replacing, repairing, maintaining, and also in the contracts that they have with the people who they're buying those pieces of equipment from. I know that it happened on the library, we had proprietary specifications for a lot of the same items. I believe that Sherwood Middle School had a lot of the same proprietary items, a task that was started with the old, we worked with Bob Cox, now Angela and Keith, who are representing that department. So, that's the MGL definition and why and how it's used, kind of the snapshot of where it's required in the MSBA in their mod six. They require us to provide a list and identify all proposed proprietary items, which shall indicate an elected body of the district. Here, we are asking the school committee. So, these proprietary items that have gone out, they've been reviewed and recommended by a lot of different people, Angela and Keith from the building department, Shrewsbury Public Works, Shrewsbury Fire Department, Shrewsbury Police Department, along with representation of the school administration, who feel that these items are imperative for the school to operate correctly, for the security of the school. The standardization of security is very important. Don't want to get into specifics here for obvious reasons, but, you know, the door hardware's, the access controls, the video intercom systems, the telephones, they all need to work seamlessly, and all the schools are all tied together. So, in order to keep that continuity, we want to require these items in the specification be bought in that way. Under Mass General law, you're required to, other than using proprietary specs, you're required to have three manufacturers that are able to meet the same standards. So, the way that we're required to move around that is with a proprietary specification, so.
This is not to say that it isn't competitively bid. The installation and so on is still competitively bid, so it's just the portion that it absolutely makes financial sense in terms of having continuity across the district for a number of reasons, as Walter said. The only ones that were added that, from Sherwood, are higher levels of technology programs. So, they are the intrusion, starting from the bottom, the intrusion detection system, the video surveillance, and then the digital sign system and access controls are different. They're added, but the others are the same, so they have been district-wide for, I'm sure, much longer than Sherwood, and it made sense for that project.
So, these, all of these systems were included in that original estimate on the, at the schematic design, and they were also included at the design development package. So, we are still on budget. These do not have an effect on the budget, so we're happy to report that. They also, like Katie said, they are, they are the same installation, they're just the type of material that you're buying. So, we'll open it up to questions. We'd also like to ask that following questions if the committee choose, we'd really like to have a recommendation to proceed with the proprietary, but we'll take questions first.
Great. Thank you. Mrs. Fritz, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to add as a representative to the building committee?
Just to welcome Walter. I know when, you know, we've all had a long relationship with Paul Queenie, and when we heard he was leaving, like, oh, no, but, you know, Walter has experience in the community, so it's, I think it's a great fit, so welcome. And I think my favorite slide is the "you are here" one to show like how far along we are in that project. I mean, we're really moving.
It feels, you look at that slide and it looks like we're near the end, but we still have, we still have a long, we still got the fun stuff. My favorite stuff.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions and comments? Dr. McGee?
So, I noticed in the materials that we received that there was, I don't know if you call it a consultant or whatever, there was a letter associated with each item certifying that it was a good idea to stick with that proprietary thing. And I'm just curious to know how that is paid for, what sort of dollars are associated with each one of those letters?
Those letters are, there's no additional fee for those letters. We consider that part of our architectural engineering design fee to address items like proprietary specifications. To be clear, the genesis of the request for the proprietary specs came from the district. We listened to them and agreed with them. They had excellent reasoning for them, and so had no issue with writing those letters of support.
No, I'm, I think it's a good idea. It's, I guess the reason I was asking is some of the items are fairly inexpensive. So, an Apple TV, one or $200.
Oh, oh, is that your, did I answer your question?
And so, if you, if you need a consultant to write a letter, I would not be shocked as to whoever's paying for it, whether it's you or whoever, that that consultant got paid a certain amount of money, which may come very close to $100 or $200. So, I was just curious.
Yes, there's absolutely no fee associated with it. It's really all for the betterment of the project. It's an excellent question, to be clear about that. Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Colleagues, further questions or comments? Dr. Sawyer, anything you wanted to add?
Just to welcome Walter on board again. His reputation precedes him, not only from the library project, but we're told that he did an outstanding job on the school project in Carver as well, and we have a high degree of confidence in the work that PMA does, and certainly Walter, we're, you know, we'll continue that tradition. We did have the opportunity to thank Paul Queenie, his last appearance at the building committee meeting, and he's moving on to a terrific job at UMass Lowell, and they'll be fortunate to get him. I think in terms of, just to follow on Dr. McGee's question, and I think reading it, some of it needs to be, you know, this is a public body that has to approve this, there has to be a certain amount of things to say that we're, it's justified that these things are happening. But the overall, just for anyone watching in the public, the, you know, one thing that I know has been a longstanding piece with LPA as far as our architect for different town projects is that there's a certain allotment that MSBA puts into their schema for a building project, and LPA has come in below that in terms of the overall cost, and so we know that's a high-value proposition, and of course, it's good to know there's no additional cost to the project for this type of work. The 3,000-page submission, I did not read all 3,000 pages by any stretch, but again, there's a lot of highly technical things that are happening, but certainly from my perspective, you know, the idea that the various teams, whether that's Mr. LaRue with IT, or whether that's Mr. Baldinger from public buildings around the kinds of specific items, this just makes a lot of sense for the project, and certainly I recommend that the school committee vote to adopt these proprietary items.
So, with that, if there's nothing further, colleagues, we will now proceed to, I'm going to ask for probably the most significant tongue-twister of a motion that I'm ever going to ask for. I would entertain a motion that the committee vote to approve that the following items be included in the Beal project bid specifications as proprietary items, as it is in the best interest of the school department, town, and public to have these specific items in the Beal School for integration of systems across all schools and/or to match existing systems and allow for seamless and cost-effective maintenance and repairs in the future to wit: AeroHive wireless access devices, Brevo access control devices, Apple TV set boxes and carousel signage system, Sergeant door hardware, Sloan valve company flushometer valves for the water closets and urinals, Bosch intrusion detection devices, Cisco network switches, Epson classroom projectors, Roland telecenter U-public address systems, NEC telephone system, and Exact Vision video surveillance system.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda, and I can scroll down to it. We have nothing under curriculum this evening. The next item on our agenda is under policy, the first of three items under policy. This is a presentation and first reading of the proposed new policy 914, crowdfunding. Michelle Biscotti, who is our district's co-coordinator of development and volunteer activities, will present on this draft of a new policy aimed at regulating crowdfunding campaigns undertaken by staff in the district. Mrs. Canzano and myself, as the policy subcommittee of the school committee, have had an opportunity to review and comment on the proposed policy. I will turn it over to Ms. Biscotti for her presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. Crowdfunding.
Actually, Mr. Palch, if I could just make a quick introductory comment.
Go right ahead, Mr. Collins.
While she's still setting that up, and that is that this entire topic of crowdfunding is one, as she will delve into the details for you, is certainly grown over the past recent years in the public education sector. And actually, you know, we've had over the past few years several requests from staff, our own staff, asking if they could conduct a crowdfunding-type fundraising effort for their classroom or a project using different types of platforms. And when those requests came in, for a variety of reasons which she'll get into, we had to say no for those. But there is, you know, one mechanism by which we could allow this to happen, therefore we wanted to make this proposed school committee policy for you to help guide and regulate this type of activity and allow it to happen organically in the classroom, and that there are some certainly considerations that are implicit in this whole policy. And those considerations were kind of ferreted out, if you will, through a pilot program that Mrs. Biscotti coordinated and ran at three different schools. And so, this policy that's been drafted is a result of the pilot program that she ran, a draft policy that she looked at with some other school districts, and also that we ran in front of our legal counsel as well. So, just wanted to have you that context before we delved right into the topic of crowdfunding and then subsequently the policy piece.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, crowdfunding, if people aren't familiar with the term, they're certainly, I think, more familiar with the practice, which is really using the internet to raise money from a lot of people who are donating small amounts. And, you know, GoFundMe is probably the more common or most commonly known platform for that. I think if you use Facebook, you're seeing more of those sort of projects, you know, pop up every day. And the one thing I would add to the definition, it's typically done some, over a short period of time, so we're not talking about months and months of fundraising anymore. It's really a concept that's emerged since the late '90s, but has obviously grown and expected to raise almost $300 billion by 2025, and that's across, you know, any and all needs. But for education, it's really evolved mostly over the last 10 years. There's no official estimates, but there are some, you know, numbers we can look at in terms of money raised, but also really looking at the average total cost of the projects. We're talking about projects less than 600, on average, $600, donations just over 50, and it's taking, you know, less than a month to actually fulfill. The appeal of crowdfunding, you know, at its essence, it's funding classroom needs that would not otherwise be met by a district, and that's obviously not here in Shrewsbury. It's happening all over the country every day. The internet, just by its nature, expands the use of your potential donors, so we're very obviously aware of always going to the same people and trying to raise funds from them over and over again for different causes. This expands the reach well beyond, you know, your local area. It also lets you put projects forward at any time. You know, there's nothing worse than finding that perfect grant and finding out it closed three weeks ago, and you're stuck until next year, or that your PTO has already allocated all of its funds for the year. So, this really lets projects, you know, evolve in the classroom at the sort of will or leisure of a teacher, as opposed to being forced at a time when it may or may not be helpful, or, you know, you're forced to sit on something that would be really great to fulfill, and you can't because resources aren't available. And it also lets you really imagine and envision any project that you think would be helpful for your classroom, or that you can get approved from, you know, your leadership. Again, looking, we're not, we're very fortunate in Shrewsbury to have groups like SEF and also Quarter Nine, that I think gives our teachers a pretty wide berth when it comes to putting forth projects for their classroom, but certainly a lot of grants aren't that open. They're very specific. Oftentimes, it can feel like maybe square peg, round hole, when you're trying to get funding. So, this, the appeal of this is that you don't have those restrictions. But all of that said, there's certainly some considerations we need to look at, and, you know, I think it touches on Patrick said, and why in the past we've had to say no to teachers who had wanted to go down this road. You know, first and foremost, here in Massachusetts, there are laws and regulations around the amount of money our teachers can collect or be gifted, if you will, you know, we're certainly reminded of that around the holidays or any time, the end of year. or anytime the end of year giving, you know, parents want to be very generous. But, you know, we're certainly aware of limitations. You want to be financially transparent. You want to see when the dollars are gifted, where they're going, and what's ultimately purchased or received. We're always looking to protect our students' privacy. There's the matter of who owns the goods once you've raised the money and purchased them. If, if the teacher's doing all the work, you know, who owns the items that are being purchased? And all of this is just wrapped up too and just ethical considerations around the way we do business. So, to find the platform for Shrewsbury, I looked at, you know, any articles over the last two years that talked about schools being successful in this space of crowdfunding. I found seventeen platforms. And for the variety of risk leave, reasons listed here, whittled down to two that distribute products instead of, or in addition to, to money. Because that's really, I think, where, what takes away a lot of the concerns is if you can get product instead of cash. One of those had a very limited product offering. You could basically purchase one product with the funds that you raised. And that really is limiting to a teacher who's trying to build, you know, a very robust, comprehensive program for a classroom. And that really left us with one platform or website called DonorsChoose.org, who while sort of, it kind of whittled down to them being the choice, I would, they're by no means the, the last choice. In looking at what they have to offer and how long they've been doing business, you know, I think they're very, if I could move this along. They are a very, they have a lot to offer that we could benefit from. They've been in operation for almost twenty years. Obviously, worked with a lot of schools, over a million projects have been funded. They do distribute money or product, but money is a secondary offering. The cash is really only available for field trips or speakers. And that can easily be managed with a policy, as Mr. Collins has said. But first, first and foremost, their business model is around distributing products to teachers and to classrooms. And they have an impressive array of vendors. There's twenty-two of them, many of whom we already order supplies from, Amazon Staples, School Specialty. Another key to their business model, and I think what really makes them stand out, is they go out and actively solicit foundations and philanthropists who want to support education. And they bring those dollars back to the projects that are on their website. And those dollars are oftentimes given as either a small amount to a number of projects or they're, they're providing a match. So, if a donor gives, you know, ten dollars, they'll double or triple the gift that you give. And DonorsChoose is very good about highlighting those match opportunities. They're good about emailing teachers who have projects on their site to let them know that dollars are available. And again, those are dollars that would not otherwise be available to your project if you're looking just in your own community to provide funding. They have an incredibly well-built website. And it's, I would say, helpful not just for the user but for the donor. And I think that's important too, if we're suggesting our teachers use this and we're encouraging people to give to projects that our school is, is putting out there. You know, I think the site does a good job of being appreciative and thankful to the donor. And I, I, you know, I don't, and that's good because it only makes for hopefully a repeat donor. One thing worth noting though is that they only fulfill projects that are fully funded. So, if your project is five hundred dollars and you raised four hundred and ninety dollars, your project is not considered, considered funded. What happens in that case is the teacher doesn't get the products that they were hoping to get. The donor is given the opportunity to take the donation and apply it to a different project. Or they can turn it into a gift card that the teacher can then use on DonorsChoose for either a future project or for another product that would be helpful to the classroom. So, as, as Patrick mentioned earlier, we did run a pilot program with these objectives, really to understand how, how easy the site was for our teachers, to look at the vendor catalogs, you know, the availability of grants, how long it took to fund a project, who the donors were, the turnaround time for getting materials, and then the reporting piece. The projects ran from late fall to early, were posted from late fall to early January. We looked at three different schools, three different grade levels. The amounts, as you can see, varied from really the low end to what's considered the high end from crowd, for crowdfunding. Over a thousand dollars is considered a bigger sort of priced item. And the teachers all had different experiences with fundraising and with crowdfunding, which was also important to test. I will say, those who weren't entirely comfortable with it were still good sports about trying this. And...
Do you want a hand?
No, it's, I can't see it on the screen as much as I... Maybe I do want a hand. Oh, there it is. But this is their base page.
Hit it one more time.
It's not going, how do you go? It's not going live.
Let's see. I think what we want to do...
Is that it? I think that's it. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just go back to the...
All right, I think I can do that. Okay, so this is the website. It will, they'll promote certain projects as, you know, as they choose themselves to promote. But you, it's easily searchable. So, I'll show you some of our Shrewsbury projects that we still have. We have two projects still available or still up for funding. One is going to expire in three hours. And the rest, this one is available, I think, until May first. They put a limit of three months on every project. And again, crowdfunding is supposed to happen in a short period of time. And they feel if you can't do it in three months, then it needs to come off the site. Basically, they have a format that they ask teachers to follow. And they're, they're good about working with teachers to help them do the write-up, to find the picture that's going to be appealing. And then they're very clear about where your donation, about where the donation is going. So, you can see the actual product, the cost, the vendor it's coming from. You know, shipping is free, but they, they clearly tell you that there's a labor and materials charge, and that's a flat fee for every project, the total cost. And they do have a suggested donation to DonorsChoose, but donors do not have to contribute. So... And if you have questions about the calculation, it's easy enough to find. So, I would say in terms of usability and transparency, they provide a lot of information that you don't normally see. And as a donor, you know, it's easy to go around and see. And they'll tell you pretty clear, this, there's nine donors, you need sixty-four dollars, forty-five. So, they tell you, they help you if you're looking to donate, to identify projects that need help. So, it, I have to say, this is one of, this is probably the best site I saw as I was going through my research in terms of visually appealing as well as the content they made available to both the teacher and to the, the donor.
And while she's going back to the presentation part, leaving the website, and she mentioned that, you know, one, one project has three hours left. This is the shameless plug, like public radio, to, you know, go to your laptop now and make those final contributions in the waning hours here to fully fund that project. And that would be a great thing if we could do that. And then there is a second project that is still looking for funding as well.
Good to know. All right, so, where did I go? The pilot program. So, all of the teachers basically reported that DonorsChoose was easy to use, that had a great selection of vendors and products. They all wished matching funds had been available. Unfortunately, they weren't. One did get, I should say, I shouldn't say that none were available. One received a nominal corporate grant when they first posted the project. And the other one had an opportunity that became available after their project was already completed. I think what I saw in looking at the research, I think it comes down to timing. I think August and September seem to be very popular times for donors to want to contribute to classroom projects. They're excited to help support the start of a new school year. And it's something to consider as people are posting projects, that there may be an optimal time to, to be doing that. And also, there's the opportunity to just keep an eye out on what grants or matching options are available and post your project when you find something that you think will match yours. And as we've already talked about, they all had a different experience with the funding. One project was funded in two weeks. And this was a teacher who had done a lot of fundraising herself personally, was very comfortable promoting things on social media. And so she put it out to her own network. And you see the eleven donors out of the twelve were family and friends of hers. And I would say on average, though, looking at that, they probably, you know, the average gift was still under forty dollars, which is, you know, well under the average that this, that crowdfunding in general sees. She would be happy to use this again. She thought for herself it was just easier than applying for a grant. And it only took two to three weeks for her to receive the materials. The other projects, as we said, are still being funded. And these teachers just weren't as comfortable using social media to promote projects. They didn't feel comfortable putting out to family and friends. And one actually said she preferred the grant process because you write it up and you send it off. Whereas with this, as your project stays lingering, it's sort of one more thing for you to do. And you're getting reminders from DonorsChoose that your project needs funding. And you're getting recommendations about what you can do, which are all, it's great and useful information. But again, if it's not your comfort zone, it can feel like one more thing on your plate that you, you have to get to. And from a reporting standpoint, I think we found everything to be, you know, more than adequate. There were notifications about match opportunities as they became available. Helpful hints, as we've said, to help bring the projects forward. You know, and I think the conclusion for the pilot would be that it does, DonorsChoose does work. It's just, it's not going to work for everyone. It's not going to work for every project. It's really best if you're comfortable pushing things, these things out on social media and promoting them. You'll certainly see faster and better results doing that. DonorsChoose reports that half of their projects are funded without any type of promotion. You know, I'm not, our results suggest that's not true. So, I'd be, would want to look at it a little bit more closely. But there are some projects that do get funded without that type of promotion. I also think it's best to keep the projects within a smaller range. I think that thousand-dollar price tag is a little high. DonorsChoose recommends that if you can, you break it into two separate projects. If you can, you know, fund, run two projects for smaller amounts, your likelihood of success is greater. And I would call DonorsChoose another tool or another funding option for our teachers. It's by no means, I think, could it or should it replace anything else? But it's another option, and I think we can all use as many options as we can get. And the recommendations are really to allow teachers to use crowdfunding sites that distribute products, not, not cash. And, you know, we may see more and more of those come up. Or we may say that some that offer product offer more and make a more robust offering. But certainly, DonorsChoose right now would be the preferred site. And then to write up the policy that really has some protections in it around principal and IT approval, clearly stating district ownership of anything that's bought through crowdfunding, that limits or prohibits the use of pictures of our students, and also that prevents teachers from eliciting donations from teacher, from students or their families that they currently have in their classroom. And I think that's all written up in the policy that's been presented.
Yeah, and I think that this, you know, and my kind of closing comment would be that the, obviously, tonight is, is you're getting kind of a twofer, is, you know, information about a new fundraising opportunity, but also a proposed new school committee policy. And they, we really want them to go hand in hand. This is a good example of, you know, how projects get done the right way, I think. This has been a really slow burn from last November up through, here we are, the end of March. And Mrs. Biscotti is a part-time employee who works in additional hours in order to do all the background work, part of all these materials together, run a pilot program, and do all the vetting that was necessary upfront in order to put the policy in front of you. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
Thank you, Ms. Biscotti, Mr. Collins, and of course, colleagues. We also, in addition to the presentation tonight, have the full draft of the proposed policy and our meeting materials. This is a first reading. We'll not be asking for a vote this evening. So, welcome questions and comments from the committee at this time. And of course, the public is welcome to weigh in with their feedback to the committee as well before this comes back to us likely at our next meeting. So with that, questions and comments, Mrs. Fritz.
I, I think it's a great way to kind of look at raising money in a different manner. It isn't local, like you said, where we do have, maybe donor fatigue for, because we do a lot of fundraising, unfortunately. I do like the fact that we're looking at a policy to kind of dovetail with it. I think it's important to have those guidelines to protect everybody. I'm just curious, because they're, that site is easy to use. You can go in, you put in your state, you see, and then your zip code, and you find. Do you have any plans, if everything goes as you, you know, the policy's adopted, how are you going to promote this? Because I think it's very easy.
Right, you mean to the teachers?
To teachers and to the public, you know, just the public at large.
Right, no, I think there's definitely some education. I think, and we haven't really talked yet about how we will roll it out, and we still need to develop that. But absolutely, I think teachers and the public need to be educated about how to use it. I think it can be daunting if you've not used it. But that said, it's really designed for teacher use. And the one thing I feel in working with DonorsChoose is that they're not used to necessarily working with, at the district level. It really, I think that's evolving for them as more and more teachers use it and just, and districts see that. They're aggregating the reporting a little bit, but it really was built for teachers and it's pretty simple to use. But I do think we need to do something so that it's, it's used correctly and the public understands why we're doing it.
Right, right, thank you.
Mr. Wensky.
I like this idea a lot. I think it's another outlet to raise really critical, you know, attention towards what we need in the classroom. And I like that it's product-based as well. I think that's great. And then in terms of, like, you see the, the one that's about to expire in three hours. The teachers have the ability to renew that after a certain time, or how do they work that?
They can reestablish the project a little later. I think there's a waiting period. I'd have to double check. But I don't think they can just post it necessarily tomorrow. But it can be reposted. And the money that's in there now will go into, it'll be up to the donor, but potentially be as, waiting for the next project that that teacher chooses to sponsor.
Got you, okay, thank you.
Dr. McGee.
So, one other question, that is, once the organization gets our email address or whatever, are we going to be getting a lot of emails from them or other associations that are promoting similar projects?
You mean, are they selling our?
Yeah.
No.
Okay. I just, by way of comment, I'd say that, you know, we hear about how teachers spend their own money to get supplies for the classroom. And I certainly feel bad about them having to do that and the district not being able to provide all the supplies that the students may need. This here, I'd be concerned about just being another straw on the teacher's back. And particularly when I see that eleven of twelve donors were family and friends and that it's on the teacher to promote this using social media, which usually means, you know, one or two hundred people that they're going to go to over and over. Sandy mentioned the idea of donor fatigue. And I, I suspect that, you know, if we look at a career of twenty-five or thirty years, that this may burn out after a year or two with a particular teacher, or at least with their friends. And I just wonder how sustainable this is. I wonder if, among other things, this doesn't reveal some of the weaknesses we have in funding our classrooms in that, in getting a report from, I guess, you regarding how much is raised each year and how many projects there were would be worth us knowing how reliant, how reliant we have become on this funding source. I think the other piece is that, you know, we've got the Colonial Fund, we've got the Educational Foundation, and now this. And, and it would be nice for us to have a sort of a uniform marketing program so that donors could get a sense as to where to put their money and why.
And I actually just like to respond to that. And I think that those are all valid, pertinent concerns. In particular, I too would be interested in going forward if we end up adopting this policy, getting some sort of reporter assessment as to what types of additional resources are coming into the district through this mechanism. I think that's absolutely essential to telling this story. We've been focusing in our recent meetings on sources other than our local contribution from local government coming in to support education. I think that that would be a critical piece to sort of get a sense of what's coming in. With regard to some of the concerns, which I, actually, most of which I agree with, it is my opinion that this is one of those examples where a policy or regulatory matter is necessary to keep up with the times. The fact of the matter is it is already occurring to staff members to pursue something like crowdfunding. And when, as, as Ms. Biscotti alluded to, law and regulations here in the Commonwealth, unfortunately, there's a lot of potential for danger, in my opinion, without a regulatory framework in place. You know, you look at some of the requirements and they're indicated right here on this slide. So, first and foremost, what I... So first and foremost, what I like about this policy, we're requiring the principal and IT department to approve of each individual campaigns. We're establishing clearly as a matter of policy that it is the district that would be the owner of any equipment raised through this. You know, setting up some ethical guideline, you know, setting up guidelines around who can and cannot be solicited because in the absence of this policy, my guess is that there would be efforts like this that would occur and they'd raise some ethical questions. So I, I, I hear the concerns, but I think the reality of crowdfunding, which is becoming more and more prevalent, in my opinion, has kind of put us to a place where a policy i- is the safest thing that we can do for staff. Because again, I feel like if we were not to do this, I feel like we would have staff to whom this would occur. And I would be concerned about that happening without some of the guidelines that we put in place. Further questions or comments?
Mr. Palich, I did have, I just, also just wanted to add a couple of things. One is with respect to the reporting. This particular platform does provide very good reporting. In fact, we each get an email every Monday morning recapping both, you know, the, the year's fundraising totals, but also the prior week. So it's, it's an automated kind of system. So it's very easy to report back to the committee what type of, you know, success we've had in terms of dollars. I think the other part about the, just to be clear about, you know, the, we are not suggesting or creating some expectation for teachers or staff to go forward and, you know, fundraise, to, to source supplies by fundraising in, in their classroom. It's rather kind of the flip side. We have a number of teachers who have shown the initiative to want to do some very creative things. And some of them, sometimes those things kind of do fall outside the norm of a regular school operating budget. But if they wanted to pursue that still, they still first have to get the approval of their building principal, who can kind of vet and say, you know what, we have the budget resources to do this. We should fund this ourselves. Or alternatively, if it were something very creative and, you know, unique, that, okay, I think this is a good idea for our school. Then allow the teacher to do that. So certainly in our discussions, we weren't trying to at all, you know, set up some sort of new expectations for staff, but rather just respond to the ones that showed the initiative to say, we'd like to be able to go out. And in the past, we've had to say no. And this allows us to, if the policy were approved, to be able to say yes in kind of a regulated and safe way, as you said, to protect the district and our, our teachers.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Colleagues, anything further on this topic? So this will come back before the committee for a second reading and a potential vote at our next meeting. And of course, for those watching at home, we invite members of the public who would like to offer comment as well to do so. So Dr. Sawyer, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, no, for the reasons stated, I, I would support the idea of a regulatory framework through a policy. I do appreciate Ms. Biscotti's presentation, the background work that she did. Mr. Collins asked her to take this on as a special project and, you know, above and beyond her, her typical work. And as you can see, she did a lot of in-depth work in, in creating the pilot and then doing the research on the various platforms. So appreciate that very much and for the reasons stated, I think it's a good idea to have a policy. But the, the cautions are well taken and I, I concur that we don't want to be using this in any way other than as an appropriate tool. I think as we, if the policy were to be approved, we can start small and think about ways that might be, where it's a good fit for us, but, but not do anything more than that, especially initially. So look forward to bringing this back for a second reading and a vote at the next meeting.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Biscotti. Colleagues, the next two items on our agenda are also both under the heading of policy. The first is an update to our physical restraint policy. This is a first reading by way of some brief background and I'm actually going to turn it over to the superintendent for some more details. But during the week of April 1st, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Office of Public School Monitoring, or PSM, will conduct a tiered focused monitoring review of the Shrewsbury Public School District. In preparation for that monitoring review, Policy 325, which is the prevention of physical restraint and requirements if used, has been reviewed by the DESI representative and it was indicated that some changes were required. A draft of an updated Policy 325 is before us in our meeting materials tonight, although I am told it will be revised further going forward. So this is just an initial discussion. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sawyer for some additional background. And of course, this will also apply to the next policy, which is the bullying policy as well. That again, it's just a first reading this evening and that is going to be updated for purposes of compliance. So Dr. Sawyer.
Sure. So in the committee's materials, there is either strike-throughs or language that's added and read. That is language that was advised to be added by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to come into compliance with what they believe should be in a local policy. We have taken an, an approach over many years that if something is spelled out very specifically in a law or regulation, it really is redundant to put it in a school committee policy. However, there are some policy frameworks that the district, or rather the department, requires certain language in the local school committee policy. We thought we were there, but Ms. Belcito had a follow-up phone call with the representative from the department who'll be here next week, who indicated that after reviewing this draft, she had a couple of other pieces she'd like to be added. Again, this is mainly technical language relative to things that are already in the law and reflect the work that we already do under the various law and, and policy or regulations rather at the state level. So rather than read a bunch of technical language, we certainly will post both of these online as they are in terms of presented to you this evening. We will be working with the representative from the department to add whatever language he feels is necessary to both the restraint policy update and the bullying policy update. We will send those to the committee in advance of the next meeting. And unlike other policies such as the previous one, crowdfunding, where the public may want to weigh in on some information, where they may prefer something or not, as far as, this is really more of a technical piece. Relatively, it's not really subject to anything other than the department saying that from their regulatory perspective, this needs to be in there. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions about either policy, but this is really somewhat of a bureaucratic function and one which we, we were hopeful would be able to move forward with consistent tonight. But we'll have to make some more small adjustments to it and we'll make sure we provide the committee with those in advance of your next meeting.
Thank you. Colleagues, let's stick first with Policy 325, which is the prevention of physical restraint and requirements if used. Does anyone have any questions or comments specific to that policy, the physical restraint and what's proposed before us this evening? Okay, moving on, the next item on our agenda, again, which is the same background that Dr. Sawyer just referenced. This is policy number 712, the bullying prevention and intervention policy. Colleagues, does anyone have any questions or comments specific to the proposed updates for this policy? As Dr. Sawyer alluded to, these are first readings. They will come before us at a future meeting for change or enactment. And again, we do expect changes based on feedback from DESI before those times. So the next item on our agenda is under Finance and Operations. It is the superintendent's recommendation regarding fees and tuitions for the 2019, 2020 school year. At our previous school committee meeting on March 13th, Mr. Collins prevented information to the committee related to fees for busing, athletics and student activities, along with tuition rates for preschool and full-day kindergarten for the 2019, 2020 school year, including illustrating potential adjustments to these fees and tuitions. A memo from Dr. Sawyer with his recommendations for fee and tuition adjustments for the coming fiscal year 2020 has been enclosed in our meeting materials. I'll turn it over to Dr. Sawyer to present his recommendations to the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Palich. The, I'll summarize the memo and then obviously any questions or comments the committee has and ask that you take a vote this evening on these recommendations. First off, and in particular orders, the order of the memo for the transportation fee. As Mr. Collins presented at the last meeting, we are going to have experienced a 13% increase in our contract with our vendor, which is year two of a contract. That, that level of increase will be moderated over the next few years of the contract. But it is a significant increase in cost. I'm not, certainly not recommending a commensurate increase in the transportation fee. However, felt that a fee adjustment of $10 per student, which would raise the fee from $300 to $310 per student, which is a 3.3% increase, would be warranted to, to maintain a little bit of the ratio between what fees pay for versus what the district pays for, which represents really essentially about a little more than a quarter of the actual cost, the entire cost of busing students to and from school. That would generate approximately close to $23,000, a little more than $23,000 in additional revenue if it were to be adopted. For the athletic fee, I recommend that that raised, be raised by $5 per fee from $310 to $315 per sport, per season. That represents a 1.6% increase. That would generate about another $5,500 if, based on our projections. And it represents again, about a little closer to half, a little more than 45% of the cost of providing our high school athletic program comes through the fee for interscholastic athletics. For the activity fee, which is a one-time fee for any and all other non-athletic activities at the high school, includes the athletics at Oak Middle School. That was adjusted last year. Currently, our fee for Sherwood is $50. Oak was adjusted last year and it's now at $75 and the high school for many years has been $100. I am making recommendations for no changes to those fees next year. For preschool tuition, I'm recommending a 3% increase to keep up again with inflationary costs for that program. That would generate a little bit more than $17,000 in additional revenue. It would be an increase of about $82 on the typical three-day-per-week program. And the, represents about 45% of the preschool program is paid by parent fees for students who are not required to have preschool programming. And then finally, and this is the, in the opposite direction, as the committee well knows, one of your goals is to phase out the payment of tuition for full-day kindergarten, one of the very few districts left in the state that has, doesn't have universal full-day K for all students and that still charges tuition for a full-day experience. The current tuition for full-day kindergarten this year is $3,600 annually. I am recommending to step that down by a 33% reduction to $2,400. This is to step down the tuition over the years so that when the new Beale School opens, we'd be able to provide full-day kindergarten to all students and not require a tuition payment. So this will be weaning the district off of that tuition revenue over the course of a number of years. This year represented a reduction from $4,000 and this will continue that trend. And the, the tuitions next year, if that were to be adopted, would represent a little less than a third, about, about 30% or so of the cost of providing that full-day kindergarten programming. So that's a summary of what my recommendations are. You had obviously the detailed presentation at your last meeting. Myself and Mr. Collins and I would be happy to answer any questions the committee has. And we would ask that you take action this evening so we can move forward with doing all the necessary preparations for the next school year.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Colleagues, questions and comments? Mrs. Fritz.
I agree with these recommendations. I think we have to always look at inflationary costs and we need to increase the fees to cover the costs of these services, unfortunately. None of us like the fees. I do have a concern as we continue to increase fees, we continue to become more dependent on that revenue source going forward. But I do understand why we're doing it and I do support it. We did receive an email around 5 o'clock tonight from an individual who was concerned about the reduction in the full-day K increase. And I still continue to support that reduction going forward. Our plan was to make sure that when the new Beale School opens and we have full-day K for everyone, that we do not have a significant gap to backfill. I think it's a prudent step and I understand this gentleman's concern. But I think looking forward to the future, it's a prudent step to take.
Thank you. Thank you for noting that piece of public feedback. I neglected to do so at the top of my remarks. Mr. Wensky.
In addition to what Sandy mentioned, I agree. I mean, in terms of full-day K, that, that was always our goal to remove our dependency on the fees over the course of several years. Obviously, fees are a tough topic every year, right? And I think we've seen in previous years, if you don't address it in certain years and you have a larger increase in a single year, it's a lot harder to digest for families, so.
Further comments or questions from the committee? At the risk of being redundant, I'll echo both of, of the sentiments expressed. Obviously, we don't like fees. We wish we didn't need them, but we do need them for most of their associated programming. I think that the fee increases recommended this evening are modest in nature and unlikely to prevent, unlikely to represent a significant shift to families. So I think that these are easily absorbed, or rather more easily absorbed than some fee structure changes we've asked families to absorb in the past. And I, I do think it's necessary that fees, to some extent, increase with costs so that what it is we ask families to, to take part in, is a proportional representation of the total cost of the program. Obviously, the costs for the full programs greatly exceed their associated fees. I do feel strongly, as I've said many times, I do feel very strongly that we need to continue to back away from any fees associated with our full-day kindergarten program. Right, you know, the full-day kindergarten is something that the vast majority of Massachusetts students and families have access to free of charge. The principal reason we don't offer full-day kindergarten to all students who want it now is because we don't have the space. But when the new Beale School opens, we will. And I feel very strongly, and as I know the committee does, that when that time comes, we need to be providing tuition-free full-day kindergarten to all families who want it in keeping with what is so clearly the educational expectation here in Massachusetts. So those are my comments. Dr. Sawyer, anything further?
Again, these are my recommendations. I concur with the sentiment. And I too prefer not to assess or ask the committee to assess or to pay the fees or tuitions, which I certainly have over time as a, as a resident and a parent in the district. But again, the funding remaining somewhat in balance in terms of what the proportion has been taking up in, in past years in order not to put undue pressure on other areas of the budget. But with the exception being the full-day kindergarten. But it, it is, in my opinion, very hard to justify why one community, one of the very few communities in the entire Commonwealth, is charging a very significant amount of money to families for a service that is essentially not charged for in, in the vast, vast majority of communities in the state. That to me is just the right thing to do and doing it over time is a responsible way to do it.
Thank you, Dr. Sawyer. Colleagues, anything further? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion at this time that the school committee vote to approve the adjustments to fee and tuition rates for fiscal year 2020 as illustrated in the superintendent's recommended, recommendation memo.
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made in second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. The next item under, on our agenda is under New Business. It is a vote to ratify the collective bargaining agreement with the Shrewsbury Cafeteria Workers Association. The Shrewsbury Cafeteria Workers Association agreed to contractual changes in their collective bargaining agreement on March 13th, 2019, pending ratification by both the SCWA and the Shrewsbury School Committee. The SCWA voted to ratify the agreement on March 26th. A memo from Ms. Malone and a copy of the tentative memorandum of agreement between the parties is enclosed. Pursuant to state law, the town manager, Kevin Mizikar, may vote on this matter. He has indicated to the committee earlier this evening that he does not intend to do so and that he does not have any objections to the recommended agreement. At this time, I will turn it, well, actually, in a minute, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Malone, our Director of Human Resources, just to summarize the terms of the agreement. First, I want to say that I had the opportunity to be the school committee's representative in this negotiating session. And I just want to thank the Cafeteria Workers Association and their leadership, first and foremost, for their participation in a very productive negotiation session. But more generally, for the work that they do for the district day in and day out. They perform very demanding, often thankless roles. And we, as a committee, certainly value their work on behalf of our district and our students. So I just want to express my thanks to the SCWA. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Malone, just for a summary of the agreement at hand.
Sure. I did want to mention that a key consideration of the agreement was to bring all hourly rates to a minimum rate that equals or surpasses the Massachusetts' minimum wage rates. The, the grand bargain that Governor Baker has signed into law. And although towns are not required to follow these laws unless voted into law by the local selectmen, from a purely pragmatic stance of attracting and retaining employees, we, we felt that was important in discussion with Mr. Palich and with Ms., with Ms. Nichols, who also participated in this negotiation. So the, the real thrust and crux of the agreement was that we would need to drop the first step of the, of all roles within the cafeteria workers, beginning with next school year. And that the current step one would be gone and then step two would be, become step one and so forth. And so it would be a 3% increase for the 19- would become step one and so forth. And so it would be a 3% increase for the 1920 school year, 3% for the 2021, and 2% for the 2122 school year, and step movement each of the three years. This was the minimum amount that would keep us competitive with upcoming changes to minimum wage laws. And it is affordable, according to Ms. Nichols, although it, it does obviously cut into our operating budget for that particular program. And then the only other thing that was changed in the contract was the phone number for call-in procedures. So really, it was about bringing wages into alignment.
Thank you. Before we move it over to the committee for discussion, Dr. Sawyer, anything you wanted to add?
I just also want to express my appreciation to the Cafeteria Workers Association and all their members for the hard work that they do each day to serve our students and our staff. They do a terrific job. They have a great attitude. I'm pleased that the negotiations were fruitful, were able to come to agreement between the two sides, and that they ratified the agreement on their part. And I recommend that the school committee do the same and ratify this evening.
Colleagues, questions or comments on the proposed agreement at hand? Dr. McGee?
I just, you know, I guess I'm a little thick here. I'm trying to figure out this drop step one, and now step two is the new step one. There's still three steps, plus the longevity, right?
Correct.
So step one, step two, step three. So if someone's finishing their first year, about to go up to step two, with this new contract, they're finishing their first year, where do they go? Do they go to step two or step three?
That's a good question.
Oh.
Isn't it, Mr. Palance? I think we'll have to discuss that.
Oh, okay.
We did not discuss it.
A new person coming in is going to go to old step two. And so I'm assuming that if, you know, there's progress for the people who are finishing step one, I just, I'm just trying to figure it out. Because it sounds like the people who are finishing first year and second year are both going to be in step, old step two.
Is there step movement currently?
There is not step movement currently.
Yes. So the existing agreement being replaced did not include movement?
So explain that to me.
They would, it is my assumption, Ms. Malone, Ms. Malone can look at this, it's my assumption that they would be at the new step one. That is my assumption. I'm not 100% on that.
Yeah, it was not something we discussed the specifics of within our negotiations, and it's something we're going to have to study.
Okay. So just again, and not to expose my ignorance of this anymore, but, so we're, before, there was no movement? So there was a step one, step two, step three, and at the end of a year, people didn't flip up to the next step?
The steps were frozen for a number of years. In this last contract, we did have some step movement, but it didn't occur every year of the contract.
Okay. So these steps existed. People were at different levels, but there was not movement from one level to the next level?
The vast majority of the staff were either at the top level or step one.
And with this new contract, will there be automatic advancement of steps?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, that will happen.
I'm getting closer to understanding it. Thanks.
Good question.
Well, thank you for the question, Dr. McGee, and we can clarify that.
Thank you. Colleagues, any further questions or comments on this agreement? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion that the school committee vote to ratify the collective bargaining agreement with the Shrewsbury Cafeteria Workers Association for the 2019 through 2022 school years, as illustrated in the tentative memorandum of agreement between the parties. Do I have such a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. Is there any further discussion? We're going to proceed to a roll call vote. Dr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Wensky?
Yes.
Mrs. Fritz?
Yes.
Mrs. Gonzano?
Aye.
Mr. Palance, aye. Motion carries unanimously. Way to shake it up, Aaron.
[laughing]
The next item on our agenda is under the approval of minutes. We do have two sets of minutes to review this evening. They are not in the book, but they were provided to the committee under separate cover. These are the minutes of our workshop on March 6th, 2019, and the minutes of our regular meeting on March 13th, 2019. The minutes have been reviewed by Mrs. Fritz as the committee secretary. Members, does anyone have any questions, concerns, corrections, additions, or deletions? Seeing none, without objection, the minutes are accepted. We do need to go into executive session this evening. I will entertain a motion that the school committee enter into executive session for the purpose of collective bargaining with the Shrewsbury Education Association, where deliberation in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and for the position of reviewing, approving, and/or releasing executive session minutes, and to return to open session only for the purpose of adjourning for the evening.
So moved. Second.
Motion has been made in seconded. We're going to proceed to a roll call vote. Dr. McGee?
Aye.
Mr. Wensky?
Aye.
Mrs. Fritz?
Aye.
Mrs. Gonzano?
Aye.
Mr. Palance, aye. Thank you.